I want to welcome everybody and we'll talk about it after we get things going. A budgeting.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John?
John, with safety and justice and what everybody do here safely. We pray that you grant wisdom during this meeting and that everybody have a good rest of the week and keep everybody safe and healthy.
Thank you, John. Okay. Could we have a roll call for attendance of the village council?
President McDonald?
Here.
Alex Kennedy?
Here.
Jennifer Swab?
Here.
Don Hoffman?
Here.
Yvonne Pellicek?
Barker excused. Please note for the record that Clerk Laurie Zelenok is present and Treasurer Judy Verse is excused from the meeting. The councils received the minutes of the regular meeting of the village council for July 8th, 2024. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections? If none, motion to approve would be in order?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the July 8th, 2024 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion carries. And we'll move to the agenda. With the council's indulgence, if you would add a number three under new business. We received a last-minute request for a road closure for the Addison Township Firefighters Association Fund Run scheduled to be September 22nd. So we'll speak to that at that time. Other than that, I have nothing further. Anybody else? Hearing none. Motion to approve the agenda as amended would be in order?
Yeah, I would approve the resume of August 12th, 2024. In addition to that, I need number three under new business, the road closure for the Addison Fund Run.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, motion carries. Agenda is approved. The councils received treasurer's report for the month of July. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections on that? If none, a motion to approve, receive, and file the report would be in order? I'll make that motion.
I will, of course.
There any questions on the motion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please, Lori?
McDonald?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swab?
Yes.
Motion carries. The council has received the accounts payable for July of 2024 along with the amounts for each fund. Are there any questions, changes, or corrections on the accounts payable?
I'd like to make the motion to pay the bills in the amount of $42,796.91 for general, $82.17 for major, $1,260.30 for local, and $131.93 for Mill Park Recreation.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to pay the bills for July of 2024. Can we have a roll call for that, please?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Swab?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. This is an opportunity now in the meeting for the public to address the village council. Anybody want to?
Leave my journal.
Whatever's on your mind, Bill. No, well, in my report, I do intend to update the council on the water resources, so at that time, unless you need to leave early.
No, I'm here for the election.
Okay. Okay. Cindy?
Yes, sir.
No? Okay. All right, we'll move on then to new business. There, it was brought to my attention and confirmed by the homeowner and the arborist that they hired along with a tree service that I contacted for an estimate for the tree removal on East Street. And it happens to be in Alex's, on the right-of-way in front of Alex's house. I've, by all accounts, two trees need to come down. And at least one of them needs to be stump ground. The reason I'm saying that is because they're right up against the sidewalk and if we, they can't cut it, you know, level without creating a trip hazard, so we need to reduce it. And I think I, so homeowners company, Owen Tree Service, was, gave an estimate of $5,200.
Yeah, like $16,000.
How much?
It was like $16,000.
With both? Yeah, I think it was $5,200 for taking the trees down and an additional $600 for stump grinding and cleaning up the stumps. And Lori, did I send it?
You've got a back.
Yeah.
Yep.
The north side of East Street.
Should pass paper to your packet.
Yeah. I think I donated my packet to a better cause, unless it's right here. Yeah, here it is. And so the, I called Rooted Arbor, it's another tree care company, they did the tree removal on the Spencer's, or, no, on North Street. They took down the two trees up there last year, I believe it was. So they provided a quote for, "Cut down and remove the two maple trees, remove and chip the brush, leaving the firewood." There, that is a difference between the two quotes. The Owen was going to take everything, I mean, they'd take the wood and everything. I asked if they would cut it and leave four-to-six-foot sections of the trees. We have two residents that are interested in the wood, one, I think, being John, and the other is a resident on Porter Drive. So it's up to the council. So.
Yeah, they'll focus $5,100 just for cutting.
Yeah. Yeah, $5,100. The Rooted Arbor, the company that gave us the second quote, gave us a grand total of, including stump grinding of both stumps, but they're not going to clean up the stump grindings for $1,800, which seems very reasonable to me. And as far as the third quote, I called, I didn't call KNS Tree Service, I did call and left a message for Addison Tree Service, and I never heard back.
No, Mark didn't call you for, for Mark?
No, I never got another call.
I wasn't sure if he would say.
Yeah, I wish I had. Yeah.
I think his would be comparable to this, he wouldn't be on the $6,000.
Yeah.
But that still seems reasonable.
Right, right.
There's one right up the Hagerman, which I didn't know about, a friend of mine is using them. I can find out and give you the name if you're interested. I think it's on Lowood, is that where it's?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's up to the village council.
So we could approve up to.
So I will say that one of the trees is in imminent danger of splitting and falling, and I'd hate to put it off another month to make a decision, but it is absolutely up to the council how we do this. We'll have, we don't have to make a budget amendment tonight, but we currently only have $1,000 for tree service. At a future meeting, we'll have to re-budget a little bit to take care of this. If, either way, whether it was a high bid or the low bid, I would recommend the low bid personally, but.
Especially since you've used it before, there's a reason.
Yeah. It's taking. Well, there's wires to the, along Elmwood Street, and then his house is within falling distance, so getting, getting someone licensed and insured is a, is a big deal.
They're coming through village insurance.
Yeah. So, okay, so what is the pleasure of the council? Do you want to?
I'd like to make a motion to approve spending up to $1,800 on tree removal project on Elmwood's, on the.
Yeah, the address is, the address is 309 East Elmwood, but the trees are on East Street.
Spending up to $1,800 since that's our last quote, somebody that we've wanted for.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize up to $1,800 for the tree project at 309 East Elmwood. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call, please, Lori?
Swab?
Yes.
Hawkins? Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. Okay. I will contact them first thing tomorrow and try and get it.
Just let me know when they're done, I'll make sure that.
Okay. Sounds good, remember that. You can remind me, right?
You know, I was, I was making a note, changing my notes. What was, when is he going to do that?
When I find out, I need to let Alex know.
Okay.
At a time.
Gotcha.
Okay. Okay. Next item under new business is a village bank account signatory. Yvonne Pellicek, trustee, offered to be a signatory on the account for the village. Judy would like that, that was her recommendation, so it would have to be approved by the village council.
Is there a reason they have another person?
She hasn't had, she hasn't had a deputy treasurer or anything, so. So, yeah, it's backup and a convenience for the village. So I'll offer the motion to designate village trustee Yvonne Pellicek as a signatory to the village bank account.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call then, please?
Kennedy?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Swab?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. Item number three is a fund run that Addison Township Firefighters Association did it last year without realizing that they needed permission from the village to use the village streets and the Polyan, not, we don't authorize a Polyan trail, but they had a little downtown road closure, temporary. And so this year, they are doing it the right way, giving us a heads-up for September 22nd at 9:00 a.m. And I think we could authorize a brief temporary road closure for that purpose from 9:00 till 1:00. Probably only be one lane, I'm not sure, I haven't gotten all the details.
Where did they go?
They, it's a, it's a Chuck Johnson skedaddle. Chuck's the firefighter that died from COVID. And so the department, this is kind of like a department thing, they run, they start here in front of Roland Hall and go to the Polyan Trail, out the trail to Gerst, and they have two different lengths, 5 and 10K. And so they go two different, one, I think one goes over Gerst, one might go all the way up to Boardman, down, and then down Hagerman, something like that. I, I could, I only found.
Sounds like what they did with the strawberry festival one year in July and Brett tried to run it.
Oh. Well, I don't really have a major problem. I think what I will discuss with them is, there will, it'll be kind of more like a, if a tree service or DTE shuts the road down, they do their start, and then when the runners start coming back in, then they'll do, do, yeah, just, we'll have barrels and notices, cautions for it. And if it's anything other than that, I will let you, let the council know. So is there a motion then to authorize the Firefighters Association Fund Run with temporary road closures on Elmwood Street?
I'd like to make a motion to allow temporary road closures for the 5 and 10K run on Sunday, September 22nd.
I say I support.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize temporary closures for the Addison Township Firefighters Association Fund Run in memory of Chuck Johnson. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Under old business, I'm going to ask council tonight to authorize our attorneys to file a request with the court to demolish 4285 Forest Street. It does mean that we'll have to allow them 30 days again to respond to the notice if they acknowledge it, and then the court will consider giving us what we're asking for. It was a very brief, relatively brief, dangerous building hearing that was held July 22nd. The hearing officer, Mr. Lombardo, did a great job. Our building official, Tim Hollis, did a good job. Our other inspectors submitted reports, and Mr. Lombardo made a finding that there was significant justification to apply the Dangerous Building Act, and in his opinion, he made the recommendation that it be demolished, that there was no, it would require expensive testing to see if the foundation was any good with three feet of water in the basement and things like that. So that's what I would like to ask the council for tonight, is authorization for the village to proceed with whatever means necessary to petition for demolishing that structure.
I'd like to make the motion that the village proceed with finding or demolishing the property at 4285, let's bring it to a close.
I support.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to authorize the village to proceed with the demolish, to petition for demolishing the structure at 4285 Forest Street. Are there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, could we have a roll call for that, please?
Kennedy?
Yes.
Swab?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mike?
Yes.
You've never heard from them.
They did not attend the hearing, we did not receive any reply or response from.
Have they paid taxes?
They, they, a third-party company paid them off last, was it this spring? I guess it was this spring.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if they came in and said, now they wanted to do something with it, would everything be put on hold?
No. No, even if they sold it, we're still going to go to court because they can't reasonably, we would require a huge performance bond if they tried to say that they were going to finish it up, and we'd win in court with having a large, but we've discussed that strategy. And then we also, our whole case was predicated on the fact that it's the structure, not the owner, so if they do change ownership, the new owners would take on the same role that the current owner has. They can't start over from, they don't make us start over from scratch. We can proceed with this the way it is. So, that said, we can move on. Forest Street project. Council, you've received a brief summary of the, it said, the top is, says Carissa Markell, she's the manager for the Road Commission as far as federal funding and the federal aid committee who determines what projects get money from what account, so to speak. So if, as you can read in the letter, the construction costs, we, she offered two options, and I believe that the engineer, the last time I spoke with him about this, said that it would be, it's going to be more expensive to do it in two years, over two years, and you're better off doing the project in one year. So that it, you don't have to, I guess, follow, you'll have taken care of all of MDOT's requirements upfront. This amount, $1,927,500, is not a complete rebuild in all of the road, but it does include base repairs, which might consist of like those outer three or four feet where the pavement's cupping and breaking up, but the county would not release enough money. It was almost three and a half million if we did a complete from north to south, if we redid the road all the way. And it gets worse, I hate to say it, but you can see that our local match would be $385,500, which I would assume we would have to let a municipal bond to help pay for it. I was thinking a $300,000 road bond could be secured with our Act 51 monies, but that would be a 15, again, that would be a 15-year bond, and we would have to come up with the $85,500, plus we have to pay for the preliminary plans for the road, which could be, the last time we did it was $30,000 for Forest Street, and now, instead of being 15% for the preconstruction plans, or for the construction oversight, it's 30%, up to 30% of the cost. So if you add 30% to the $1,927,500, we're talking about a chunk of change, six, well, almost $600. So whether, the concern I have right now is, we, we should, we have to make a decision tonight. September, the federal aid committee closes the application period. So what I'm recommending to the council is, is that we accept the amount that the Road Commission is diverting for our use from their surface transportation program, the rural funding, and apply it to Forest Street for the 2027. Unless, unless you think a year would make a difference, it's only going to get more expensive every year we go out. If we don't do it in '27, you can bet it's going to be more in '28. So that being said, I have to give them a response, you know, before the end of the month, but I'd like to have the council's support for moving forward and at least reserving that money. If we don't reserve that money, we can probably reallocate or modify the, how we fund it in the future, but right now, we, if we want to shoot for '27, we can, if we have to, we can put it off to '28 if we had to, if we couldn't come up with it. But, or we could change it and only do half the program, like if we wanted to just do the southern half, which really needs it the most. Those are, those are options.
If we decide on it today and.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't lock us in.
Locked into.
Right. It locks the money up for us.
Gotcha.
And then if we, for whatever reason, we have to either, what do they say, ask, make, ask permission or make excuses for any changes, you know, that's.
Make change and ask for forgiveness.
But I'll open it up to the council first. Do you have any thoughts, questions, direction for me?
I have a question.
Well, just, let me ask the council first.
So the top two boxes, that's not going to construction phase for 2027 and 2028.
Right.
Basically, you do.
Right.
Elmwood North and Elmwood South.
Correct.
And then the other one.
Forest, Forest Street, each side of Elmwood, yeah.
Well, Village Home to Elmwood Street, that's our sentence.
Yes, okay.
The other one is, in 2027, we'd be doing the full.
Correct.
To Gerst.
Correct.
And then what is the 2028, other than we just be getting the funding for that?
Yeah, that would be where they call it advanced construction conversion. And I don't know if that means they'll front the money to us in 28, you know, from 2028 to use in 2027.
The reason I ask is just because the totals from 2027, 2028, the top two boxes is the same as the top five.
I know.
So I'm trying to understand.
What the benefit is during one versus the other?
I know it's not necessarily relevant to the decision we have to make in terms of requesting to lock up the money, but I'm just trying to understand what.
Did the same thing. Is there, is there a financial benefit? Because like you said, I don't see the financial benefit. Is there, is there a bond benefit or?
Well, I think it's just, I think all it is, is they're giving us what the two options that we have in approaching this project.
The non-fed column, what is that?
That's us.
We would be responsible.
Yeah, if that's the $385,500, that's the total.
Okay.
For, that would be our share of doing the entire project, not including the preliminary engineering.
So I guess the reason my ass is, because if you look at the top two boxes, the non-fed column, the total to about, call it $390,000, give or take. And 2027, in the bottom two boxes, you have 1.16 mil in that non-fed column, but.
Are we responsible for a different amount if we choose different?
I, it doesn't look like it because the 953 and the 973 add up to 1.19 million. Is that right, Alex? Do you read it that way?
Yeah, that's the total column.
Yeah.
I guess that, I'm just trying to.
It does look like we would owe more if we did it, the bottom method.
Yeah, I can't answer that.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
It's more, I'm just trying to understand what the, the deal is.
But she also doesn't have the preconstruction fees on here, which does that change if we were to do this over two different years?
That's my concern.
So that it could be a re-up.
That, yeah.
Now we're only going to do half of it, half again, it's 60,000 instead of 50,000 at one time.
Right. And just so the council's aware, Giffel Webster, who put this together, is the same company that did the project in 2017, 2011, when we did Forest Street previously. We changed engineers for Elmwood Street, but I'm recommending. We changed engineers for Elmwood Street, but, um, I'm recommending that we consider Giffel Webster's for this, for this job. If you want to talk with them, they'd be happy to come in. And, but we're not choosing that now. Out of, out of our past, from our past relationship, a couple of them remember working with me, they said, hey, if you give us a fair shake at doing the job, um, we'll get you set up with this. And frankly, um, Paul O'Meara, Paul O'Meara, very nice engineer, I'm sure he knows his stuff, but he doesn't have the contacts that these guys have in Oakland County. Um, he want, uh, Paul works from Flint, and Row doesn't have a representative on the Road, Road Commission Subcommittee for Federal Aid that Giffel Webster's does. In fact, um, the, uh, Justin Wellman is the one who put this together for us, and he, uh, he's one of the partners in the company. Um, now, he wasn't back in the day, but, so I'm, I'm very comfortable with the information that we're, that we got from them. I had previously talked to the road commission, to, uh, Tom Nochell, who's basically the federal project planner. Um, and the road commission gets three quarters of all the Act 51 money that comes to Oakland County. And then it's broken up each unit, including Leonard, get a certain amount. And the federal aid, though, this S T, Surface Transportation Fund that's for construction and reconstruction, um, I was surprised it was as much as it was. I didn't expect it to be that much. But I didn't expect to see three and a half million for a total rebuild either. Um, they, up until five years ago, they were still saying million to a million and a half for new roadway, not just, you know, rebuilding it or whatever, so. Um, I can, I will ask about that, why that amounts like that, Alex, but I...
I think I know what it is, just so... Uh, so if you take the one point one six, you subtract the seven hundred and seventy-nine, which would be the base federal estate from the bottom column.
Okay.
And then subtract, uh, the one ninety-four, seven fifty from the lower column in the top group, that leaves you with the one ninety-seven fifty. So essentially, it's lumping the seven seventy-nine and the one ninety-four together, and then that also includes that one ninety-seven five. So, I, I don't know if we would be hit for the one point one six in 2027 doing that? If that was a non-federal contribution we have to make or...
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm...
So I, I guess my point would be is, I think it'd be great to have them come in just so we can understand the implications of everything. It sounds like they'd be willing to do that.
I'm sure, I'm sure that can be arranged, and, uh, we can also talk at that time about exactly what the costs, their costs would be, so we know going in. Um, MDOT won't pay for, they won't, they'll pay for construction engineering, in other words, that's part of, part of their estimate.
Sure.
Their original estimate, which is about, uh, seven pages long, uh, and I've got it, if you, if anybody wants to see the different, he did it at my request, he did it doing the whole project, doing half the project, and also he did, uh, he showed the traffic. He's, uh, he's, he seems pretty thorough. So yeah, if, uh, I can make arrangements, I'll try, I could have him here, hopefully for the September meeting.
Sure.
Let's see.
Otherwise, I'm, I'm, we're kind of blocked up for the meeting.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, if we could do that tonight, because I think the aid committee meets September ninth, and that's, applications end and it's all over, so. And I, I have to say, um, Giffel Webster has put in a lot of time and effort. They've been out to meet with me and, um, twice, actually, and, uh, I've had a video conference with them and their engineers, and, uh, they've been talking to the road commission on our behalf as well, so, um, that's nice, that, that kind of assistance is appreciated, so. So, okay, well, then, could I have a motion then to authorize, uh, the village to, uh, do the construction of Forest Street in 2027 slash 2028?
I'd like to make a motion to allow the village president to move forward, looking at the road construction for Forest Street for 2027, 2028.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Do you have to say insecure funds for, do you have to say something about securing funds for?
Um, no, I don't think, we don't have to commit to the match...
We just have to commit to the project.
To the project, and...
So they're fine with that, no matter?
Yeah, in, in essence, we're saying, this is what we're accepting, without having a contract. I'm sure that will follow, but, um, at this point, I'm more concerned with, if we don't lock it in, in September, it'll be 28, 29...
Yeah.
Before we can even begin, maybe not even 28.
And that will be three eighty-five, it'll be four eighty-five.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So let's just keep it simple and authorize it, and then we'll, we'll go forward from there. Okay, so with that, uh, we have, uh, better do a roll call, it's a lot of money.
Okay, I just wanted to repeat back to make sure I got the motion correct. Um, so Alex made a motion to authorize the village president to basically commit to the construction project of Forest Street for 2027, 2028?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sound good? Okay.
Okay, so we'll roll call on that.
Very good.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Swack?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes. Thank you for that. It's, um, this is one, one of the things I wanted to make sure we had handled, you know, so we get that money. That's, we, we're doing pretty good getting it by 27 at, at that. Okay, um...
Am I allowed to ask my...
Yes, you are.
No.
Listen to you. Okay, I'm just curious, I understand you've got the treasure position.
Yeah.
When does that start?
November.
Not till November, it's a given.
Yeah, there's no, there's no Democratic opposition and I won the primary.
So all these projects, once you're gone, they're going to continue on?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just...
Well, that's...
We know where you live, too, we can go ask questions.
That's, I'm gonna... So, so yeah, I mean, it's the, it's a council, I, I'm just the organizer, so to speak, you know? But I'm, I'm always available to you guys anyways. I mean, I live here, so I have as big a interest in this as anybody, so...
I just wonder how all these things that are taking place, how it worked once you're gone.
You know, we're always busy, though. I mean, Cindy, over the last sixteen years, we've done two road projects, we've done a couple of major drain pro, projects, it's something every year, and I'm going to get to that, uh, shortly.
It all depends on who comes in, in your place.
Well, you, you're right, but the council's well aware now of where we are and what's going on, and after I do my president's report, they'll even have a better idea of what's going on, so.
And we're here to stay, aren't we?
They all, yeah, um...
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'm staying.
I'm not even going there. I've been there, I know what it's like.
Okay, um, so then, uh, moving on, I just wanted to throw it, uh, bring the council's attention. Um, we're having a bit of a storage situation. Um, whether or not we get the, uh, the road grader, that, still waiting for confirmation of the repairs. Um, we have a lot of DPW equipment, and the, the festival committee has asked, you know, we've got these props, you know, they have the, uh, big wheat reels that they use out in the street.
Those wheels, those wheels.
Yeah, and, and other equipment that they'd like to store, and we can't commit the annex to storing stuff like that. Stuff comes and goes. I mean, we could if, uh, but it's not up to me to say, okay, you can store whatever in that building. So, I don't have a recommendation of a solution, but I, I just want you to be aware that, um, time is coming that we might have to look at expanding, uh, storage of some type. I don't know whether it could be a container or...
Didn't we ever, Jerry, since something in the past, I don't think it ever came through, but getting the truck to somebody who could do something with it, you know?
Yeah, the Firefighters Association owns it. It's, it doesn't belong to the township anymore. And, um, Chuck Johnson was the guy that was fixing it up slowly but surely. And, uh, so yeah, everything is pretty much stalled on that. A couple of our residents, Linda and Doug Noaker, had, had a guy come and look at it, a restoration guy, um, but that's not cheap either, you know?
Well, I don't mean it in a bad way, but it's kind of a boat anchor because it can't be moved easily, heavy cease breaks.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I don't necessar- I don't want to kick it out to the curb, I'm not saying cubit, but at the same time...
Well, I agree, I mean, it's...
Maybe find a better spot so that the strawberry, you know, and then how much of the annex is actually maybe starb- or firefighter ownership?
The annex?
Yeah.
None of it.
None of it.
It belongs to the village.
So you don't have to ask them if we can do this, we can...
No, they have to ask us to store it, basically, and we, we have. That for, they did have it stored somewhere else, I think it was down at Station Two the first five or so years.
It's that I, I don't want to kick it to the curb, it's a piece of history, I guess.
Yeah, no, I get it.
But at the same time, it's not feasible to move.
Right.
Uh, even if it was on casters or something like that, you know, the, the doll, the auto doll, it's just so you could at least push it and push it out with ease.
Yeah, that's pretty heavy to be pushing it around.
Right, it's...
I don't know, yeah. Well, I'll...
But we didn't give it to them because there's no space.
Um...
Could they use that again to give rides like they used to?
That's, that was the dream, was...
Because the kids love it.
Oh, I loved it. I, I drove kids on it several years when I was on the fire department, and it, they love it. I mean, it's just a, it's pretty cool. But yeah, it'd be wonderful that, you need volunteers, really, to, to make it affordable, because the Firefighters Association, it, it's always been a volunteer thing, people have donated money at various times, but, um, it's a labor of love, it's one of those things that, but I'll, I'll speak with the chief about it, let's see. But we are getting tight, even with that, um, if we do get the road grader, we're going to be hard pressed to, with everything that's in the salt barn, um, it'll fit in there no problem, but we'll probably have to get rid of, uh, get some, there's some stuff from the mill in there that we're storing, and odds and, odds and ends like that. Hopefully that will someday go back in the mill.
Weather plate is the mill.
Um, no, it's got, it's got a, it's, it's got a couple of window, you know, windows that, we used to have wood in them that we need to do. I'm too chicken to go up there and do it myself, I'll be honest. The fire department used to come and help, but they got rid of their platform, um, now all they have are ladders, so, um...
And our platform doesn't reach?
No, no, unfortunately. Um, I have been, since you bring it up, I have been talking to the county about, uh, they're talking about a grant specifically for the mill, for the exterior, which would be huge, you know, to start fixing it up, but, uh, that was over a month ago, and I haven't heard anything since. Um, the other, the other item on here is a banner structure, um, the two metal poles that they suspend the, uh...
Strawberry.
Strawberry Festival signs, well, they're so, they're so rusted that they, they're probably not safe anymore. Um, this one here seems to be in better shape, the two up here, but, um, so that being said, I'm going to ask the, the council for authorization to remove them, um, and I know subject, I mean, subject to replacement. If we leave them up, I'm not sure of the liability on them, but if...
Is there somewhere else to hang the banners?
Yeah, we have to...
That's the only concern, right?
That would be, that would be, yeah, or, and I, I can't imagine what it would cost to replace them, I, I have no clue. I mean, I can buy two twenty-foot round steel, um, poles and weld a base on them and, you know, maybe put them back on there, but...
Those are on the ground, aren't they?
Pardon?
They're on the ground? Are they four feet down?
Uh, probably, there's probably a heck of a foundation there. They've never moved in all these years.
I mean, if there's another piece of the banner and all those poles do, then if they're safety, I'd say get them out.
So I'll, um, I just wanted to make the council aware of that, and, um, I'll, maybe by the next meeting, I can have some quotes if there's some, what do they call it, architectural metal or metal companies, something that specialize in those, you know, making...
About Angela's husband on the fire department.
Oh, really?
He's, he does metal, okay. I don't know what he can do, but the man's amazing when it comes to metal.
Okay. Okay, so moving on then, um, to the president's report, we had no Freedom of Information Act, well, we did have one Freedom of Information Act request that we didn't have, that was a request to know if we had any active, um, ordinance enforcement actions against, for, uh, uh, what was it?
Forty-two eighty-five.
Um, and frankly, we did, we didn't, we don't have any active ordinance enforcements other than forty-two eighty-five. And even then, it's not, that's beyond the active enforcement, that's become like a circuit course, circuit court case. So, the response was no, there, we haven't issued any tickets or anything like that. Um, CDBG, uh, report, and they were, I did respond to their request with a, with an answer. Uh, CDBG, nothing's changed since, we got no new applications, and nothing's changed, uh, since last month. Ordinance enforcement, just the usual forty-two eighty-five. And then, um, Water Resource Commission, uh, Bill Moore talked to the engineer, Jeff Wilson, most recently, I've left him a couple messages. Um, they're going to come, they're, they're saying they're going to come forward with a plan to deal with the open ditch, not the underground part of it, but the open ditch, where the Leonard Drain comes out and goes south. Um, the, uh, survey had been performed, and I guess the engineer was going to go back and look at it again, Bill, and then come back, come back with a...
Yeah, he actually said he was going to a meeting this afternoon, he consulting, I don't know, the surveyor of company that, that he hired, that he's going to put together a package and bring it out to you guys and present it to you guys.
Okay.
He did tell me, though, that last year, they, they replaced a nine-foot section of the underground, bring it up. I never saw anybody working that.
Where? I never saw him either.
I was thinking about other stuff, it went right by my head, that stuff.
About, yeah, a couple of years ago, they did, not a couple, three or four years ago, they do, did replace a section during COVID.
He was the old guy, he's had it for years.
Yeah, no, he's, he's not that old.
Worked that long, they did that?
So anyway, um, that's still a work in progress. I mean, I, the, I'm sure that the Water Resources Commission is going to ask for our assistance to help our residents with the cost of this project, whatever it may be, so...
It did happen to bring up funding.
To bring up what?
I brought up funding to him, and he said, well, we'd rather keep it whole. I said, well, there's got to be some type of funds or something we could cap in here for this project. And he said, no, he, his idea, again, is what's going into this meeting is mostly a maintenance issue, and it's not a rebuild issue, which is, which would be good, that's going to get the cost down, so.
We'd love to see maintenance, when is that?
Yeah, amen.
I mean...
That's what, I was talking with Bill about it earlier today. We pay, uh, they, they get, uh, ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars every year from the residents of that district, and they've done nothing, well, maybe one, two physical times where they've actually done something physical to the drain. Um, so that's like... So that's like, what, $60,000, $70,000?
Yeah, so then it's interesting to hear it's a maintenance issue. You're paying for maintenance, so...
Yeah, I believe it. That will be, they will be hearing about it.
That sounds cyclical, Ken.
Yeah.
And then he was going to contact me later this week to discuss that meeting.
It'd be interesting to see a report of all the work that they've done because it almost sounds to me like the way he said last year, that, you know, what's up with that?
Yeah, when you have the fun, you kind of forget how many years went by when you actually did something.
Yeah, maybe, maybe he just did that. Maybe that's just what it was because, and maybe they're just justifying taking our money. I'm just, I'm just curious how, how it's working because...
He said, the only advantage we have to do kind of any kind of funding for this would be on a federal basis would be, it would give us a longer time to pay back the loan. And I said, first of all, community, that might be a thing. It might be an easier bill to spend over a length of time, a longer length of time.
And that, and as, as we discussed, getting the, if, if the drain problem is causing the water table to be higher, getting it to flowing will lower the water table, and that could benefit far more than just the residents that live on it. It would also help all over that area. So hopefully they'll bring something forward, but thanks for following up on that, Bill.
Did you listen to my voicemail I sent you after we talked?
No, I don't think so.
I ran into Dan up at the post office, and he was asking me about the drains.
Oh, Dan Rosberry, yeah.
Yeah, he's got an answer there. He's got a backup.
Yeah.
We talked about improving the drain going to the formation, these water area, high water drain back to, to that drain that goes along Palmyra Trail. I don't know where that goes. I don't understand quite where that drain goes.
It, it goes back to the north. It goes to the north and into the county drain. Goes north.
Is that our responsibility, that drain, or is that the county too?
Well, it's, they're responsible for their drain. We have an interceptor into that drain up by Elmwood Street, so all that water runs north into the county drain, and then it goes south and parts, parts west. So that's us. We're not going to get anything out of them for that.
Well, we talked about improving that, that shallow drain that goes to that drain water.
Yeah, yeah, and that was, leading up to that was, I'm going to ask the village council if, if we can authorize a budget for that.
Well, I said, you would, yeah, you would have to talk to him or somebody in the council.
Yeah.
They have to talk to him about how much, what he would be willing to do it for.
Well, we have, the thing is, is we'd have to have, to have someone licensed and insured doing it, Bill.
You said you wouldn't be put in control for 40 years, having equipment, other than being a teacher.
Well, that's the council's call. I'm just, I just know what our insurance agent is going to say.
I'm just not sure his license is probably...
Yeah, no, and, but...
What is, see, that kind of thing just, it takes me to know, they okayed it. The village okayed it. They dug the drain and never maintained it after that. That makes no sense to me. No sense.
Well, the problem, as you well know, is that the water, that the, the field is low, and so there's not much of, what do they call that, grade? The, it's a very shallow grade, so it has to be dug carefully. Otherwise, if they dig it too deep, it'll flow out of Ashley's and then Pond before it gets all the way to the drain. So it has to be, and it does, it does deserve better maintenance. I'm not above hiring someone local, but that's not my call. We could ask our insurance agent something about that, but I'm sure he's going to say, if it's not licensed and insured, if he gets hurt, if he damages his equipment, all of that, it's all going to come back on us, you know?
What's the question with the person here? With the person who's not included in engineering surveys, what they're doing part of this as well, or is this a separate issue?
This is separate.
This is the village drain.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure I have your...
Yeah, but it's a separate issue than the actual Leonard drain, which is what we're talking to the county about. But that was, that was number four on my, on my president's report. So I'll, I'll, I'll see if I can get a, get a quote so I can submit a budget for digging, having that done right, having that, probably the same contractor that I'd like to see do the alley project, the drainage project, which is supposed to start in September.
I only that because I feel like I need a map with flow.
Yeah.
I was thinking the same thing.
From your brain.
Yeah.
Right.
I thought it was this goal.
Yeah, actually, that would be excellent. Because I try to picture it, right?
Well, we...
I don't, I can't.
We did, we did have that survey done, so we now know where the catch basin's there at Beza Division, which way they flow, and where, what comes into them as well. But, yeah, as far as from the DPW north to the county drain, you know, that's, that's not, there's no maps or anything. And we used to have a 1920 map of the county drain from Porter Drive all the way down to, to the border, I guess, of the village. But I haven't seen that in years, and I wasn't, I don't think I was in office when that was, I think Bob Zur, Bob Zurwick might have had it, or Charles Hamilton. Yeah, yeah, it was quite a...
It feels like something that we need to get on a wall some...
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Maybe this planning commission project that we could work on for the master plan.
Is that information accessible to us at all through some of the government access sites we have? Like, again, we have access to some plot data, plot data, stuff like that as well. I'm not sure Water Resources Commission has this data available or not either.
No, but that's a good point. I, I believe we asked the Water Resources Commission years ago for that, for that and the Clark drain, and they did, they said they didn't have a blueprint for it.
Well, that's true.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, yeah, no, they started, that would have been before they start, we started having to pay maintenance, which they said we did because they now had GPS and, and, you know, whatever, they could figure out the topography of who, who gets what.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
The defeat you have to give you in a section.
So, yeah, so that's, that's...
They've got something they don't want to give.
Okay, so I'll ask again, just since we'll be talking to the guy anyways. But, okay. So we don't need to make a motion, but I'm going to look into getting a contractor lineup. We still have time to do that this year. Okay. Okay, we all know we've got an election coming up for the village officials in November. It's the regular presidential election. We've got Alex and John and Yvonne and Judy on the ballot, but there is no one, nobody submitted a petition for president. So just in the back of your minds, if you know somebody that's interested, Jennifer suggested, she'd suggest a write-in campaign for, for them. The alternative is, which we also discussed, is that somebody could just go to the clerk, register as a write-in candidate, and write themselves in and literally become village president with, with no...
Nothing else.
Nothing else, you know? I mean, if only one person writes their name and spells it right, then they're in. So just something for all of us to think about, what, where we can go with that. Otherwise, what would happen is, is after the election, you'd have a vacancy. State law would require the village council to appoint somebody. If nobody's appointed within 30 days, then you have to go to a vote. You have to schedule a special election, which is expensive, several thousands of dollars, to hope that a candidate will want to be elected.
To basically, you didn't get done, I know that's...
Yeah, yeah, and, and so...
So what was the point was to do that?
Yeah, it seemed, it seems to me. So the, the best, best outcome is, and I, like I said earlier, I'd be glad to help any way I can because I still live here, you know? But, yeah, somebody, the, some jobs are as big a job as you want to make them, you know, there's, you could do a lot, you could do a lot less than me, and still things would get by, but it, it, what quality standards do we want to have for our community, so? But I just wanted to bring that up so everybody's, we're all on the same page. We also need another PC member.
We need a president or a chairperson.
Well, you, you folks would appoint your own chair, I mean, within, from within, you know?
We live through.
Yeah. So if you know somebody, can you, if you know someone you can encourage to be on the planning commission, that would be great, so...
Somebody make it?
Uh, yeah.
Leslie.
Leslie McKenna. She was the chairperson for, she got us through a master plan that had pretty much stalled.
And we limp along because every month we have to reassign somebody until that person's chosen. I can't be that person because of double voting, being on the council here and the council there, but I still step in and will limp along until we can find somebody permanent.
Assumedly, that's legal because the law gives the planning commission the right to do that, so... Okay, so, and then the, the big one, priority waste. I, I have no answers for the, I, I'm just, I'll tell you what I have done. I've, I've posted it on the website, keep your, keep your recyclables at the curb. They seem to be getting the, most of the waste picked up. Tomorrow, I am following the truck. That's my plan. I'm going to see both trucks. I'm going to, I'm going to go out early and see who's got their garbage and recyclables out, so I know, you know, whether I'm getting the cock and bull story from them about their equipment broke down. It was so weird last week. They hit or miss. They got a recycling in one place and none in the other. When I called them, they said they had equipment problems. I don't know. How can you get, pick it up two doors down from my house and miss it at my house and then go, you know, down the street? It's craziness.
Because they're not going off of like a map of some sort, are they?
I have sent them a map, and I...
That's just a roadmap. That's not like a house.
I, I really believe that this is a management problem at priority. I've sent them each address of every home that should be getting picked up, as well as a map showing the village. And there's only been two weeks since July 1st where they actually got everything. The rest of the time, they've been a day late or two days late, be it waste or recycling. But recycling seems to be the number one problem right now. And I've told them, you know, we pay for recycling, so if we're not getting it, you know, we're not going to pay for it.
Yeah, they'll shut it down.
The problem is that there's no, there, there's only a couple residential haulers. One of them's in, in the area, aside from the private ones like Addison Disposal. Amterra and Flint just doesn't want to come into Oakland County. They do, I think they do Dryden, but they won't come further south. And their 69, their yard and dump is in Flint, so they, they, back and forth is okay, I guess. And then Priority, they bought some of the equipment from GFL, and the story I got was they got, when they bought the equipment, the owner of Priority set aside $60,000 to repair each truck from GFL because he claimed that they were a mess, which they may well have been. If GFL knew it was getting out of the business, they probably quit taking care of them like they should have. But the bottom line is, is they still don't have enough people and trucks to do what they need to do. And we don't have much choice. The only other competitor, I think, is Waste Management that still does the residential delivery, and their prices are crazy. I mean, we, we could probably still get our residents a better deal, you know, per pickup than they would if they did it with themselves through Waste Management. But we're, we're doing really good, at least for the next year. Our contract runs out in a year from, from October. So that's, everything uncaps then. Right now, we're capped at 6% a year maximum increase. And that's why Priority had to take us as is and couldn't just come in and say, okay, here's the new prices, so...
So we get a break?
Huh?
So we get a break?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not a magician.
And we're not. We sat and watched the trench fall on the road and did not pick it up.
Yeah, GFL was guilty of that too. They, they used to do that too. But anyway, tell your, call, call me, residents can call me or can call Sunrise. That's the best, the best way to do it. But they have to call before Wednesday, close of business. In other words, if you didn't get your recycling picked up on Tuesday or your waste, you need to call, and you can't really call until, what, 4:30, 5 o'clock, because usually that's when they, they finish.
Who are we supposed to call?
Sunrise Waste Management. I've got their number. You'd think I'd know it by heart now, but I still don't.
Well, if I got a line, I could find it.
Uh, I've got it right here. Hang on. It would be...
Is it what she did?
Yep.
Yeah.
Their phone number is 586-726-0022. And if you get, as council members, if you get any reports, complaints, tell them, tell the resident to call that number, no later than Wednesday, close of business, to report it. Because I guess Priority is still telling, their, their attitude is, is if we don't find out by the next day, we're not, they're not going to respond. GFL was pretty much like that too.
They have to know. It's been a week now.
Oh, yeah.
Last time, they did pick it up the next day. This time... I think the territory is so big that they took over. They're completely overwhelming because...
That's their problem.
You know, well, I agree.
Well, now it's ours.
Yeah, but it's, you know, they've got a captive audience.
Okay. Okay, well, that's all I have for my report. The trustee committee reports, Summer Festival Committee. I think we had a great Strawberry Festival. I don't think, I didn't hear any complaints. Band was great. I think the vendors left happy. The car guys, the car folks, we're all pretty pleased. I haven't heard much feedback about the Kids Zone, though, whether, how that worked out.
People, people kind of complained because it was so far away. I think it's just, it's a good, safe place, you know, for the kids to go, you know, and we're just going to keep kicking the tires some...
Okay.
It's a hike on that one. I was surprised that it was that far away.
Yeah.
But the big news is, obviously, it's not gloom and doom for the Strawberry Festival. And I give the Festival Committee all the credit in the world. I think they had great leadership with Brandy, and they all, our own Lori, people just stepped up, not necessarily at the last minute, and the, the donations really came in. So all that hard work that they did paid off for the community. So kudos to them, and, well, we need to support that kind of community activity, for sure. Cable Commission, anything, John?
I think they got canceled and...
Okay.
...it's probably six, but I will be there.
Okay. You think we need to get a substitute there or someone or?
I could ask. I can call and ask.
Yeah, yeah, if there's anything that major going on, we should have someone there. Okay, decorating... Okay, decorating committee. Uh, Yvonne's not here. Everybody, I think everything looks great.
As I say, I think she had no, I haven't heard any changes, any requests for, I think they were just kind of focusing now on fall. We'll probably push this, whatever flowers are out as long as possible to go straight in the winter time.
Yeah, she told me, uh, keep watering them until the end of September at least, so.
Yeah, so I think.
So that's what I, yeah.
That's a hundred percent Yvonne.
And, and again, Yvonne, and then Linda Noaker, uh, and Doug did the, uh, the park, and I think they did the mill.
Okay.
So, yeah, um, it's really great when people pitch in like that. I know Yvonne's been out fertilizing and doing all kinds of stuff like that, so. It really is nice. North Oakland Transportation, there's a meeting, uh, today's Monday, Wednesday, the fifteenth. Um, that'll be at Oxford Township. Uh, there's no big news or, or bad news, except, uh, it's really difficult expanding. You know, this, the expansion, I think they have forty-six routes now, over a hundred and thirteen employees for, uh, NODA. Yeah, it's huge. And we, uh, our services to Independence Township and to, um, Brandon are very, very well received. It's, a lot of the trepidation that those communities had about somebody else servicing their residents besides themselves have seemed to have evaporated, so, so it's working out. Uh, planning commission, is there gonna be a meeting this month?
At the June meeting, we've discussed having September as the next one, because of people being out of town and stuff, or really nothing besides the, um, updating of the master plan or the review.
Right.
But I think part of that is also getting a consultant planner.
Okay.
We needed somebody that could, we're gonna try to keep the revisions to stuff that we can do and house.
Okay.
And, you know, updating photos.
Perfect, yeah.
Maybe just updating data.
Right.
But there was really not much that will, and maybe adding, adding the sewer study, adding the sidewalk studies, and having these things kind of solidified in the plant.
Okay.
As part of it. But after that, we just needed somebody to give us the okay from a professional point of view.
Well, um, I had spoken with, spoken with Addison Township, and I can't say that they're thrilled with the services that they're getting.
The people at the meeting that we went to, though, they were also, um, consultant planners. Weren't they the, the training session that we went to?
Oh, yeah, for the, uh, master plan.
There's a reason if you have names.
I think they were in the book, weren't they?
I thought they were. It's like I thought they were, but I think who was in the book was not the two people.
Yeah.
Most of the presenters, I think.
I'll, I'll go back and look at mine. I think I wrote down the names of at least one of them.
And they were both very positive, and they both seemed like they were knowledgeable, and they were both energetic.
And they were both quite, uh, forthright in announcing that they had clients, you know, so.
Yeah, so.
Out of the goodness of their heart, they was at the training, but they also are, you know? So, yeah, that's a good idea.
But I didn't seem to have those in my notes, so.
Yeah, I'd rather, I, at this point, I'd prefer to explore that as an option. We've always had good luck with kind of working with Addison Township. We had the same planner for many years.
Maybe they want one, too.
Pardon?
Maybe they want one, too.
Yeah, well, they may well.
So, you know, another way we could find it is, you know how Oakland County has all those events that they book? They have the presenters listed as the keynote speakers.
Right.
So archived information from their old event would have the names of those key planners.
And I could, you know, um, I, I know someone in, I know someone in planning at Oakland County, so you want me to reach out and see?
Yeah, if you could, because I think that was the guy that was there, right?
There was one, there was a man and a woman there.
Yes, and then they were two. Besides that, we just need a, a chair.
Yeah.
We're looking for a chair.
Let's fill the seat, then we'll worry about the chair. I think that'll take care of itself.
So.
Okay.
That was it. But I will make a motion to cancel the, the August planning commission meeting.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to cancel the regular planning commission meeting in August. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor of the motion to cancel the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, please say no. Okay, motion carried, all in favor. Palmyra Trail Management Council, their meeting's August twenty-first. Um, not sure where that'll be. Um, it's just , uh, normal business as usual. They're, uh, working in the Orient End. You may have noticed that the trail, uh, in the village between Elmwood and Rochester Road has been widened. They, they came in, the trail manager got, had an implement, uh, kind of a three-point grader on the back of a tractor, and they, uh, opened it up, excuse me, and then they put new, uh, they got a donation, uh, of topping, the limestone, so they added a couple inches all through there. Hopefully, they're gonna do the whole trail, but this was kind of an experimental thing. And they did do from, um, Gerst Road all the way to Boardman as well. So it's a pretty nice stretch up here. They're working in Orient now. We'll see how that goes. And then, uh.
Well, it was bad. I wrote that. It wasn't bad.
Good. It's good to hear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She does a good job.
I know, she does. She's a workaholic when it comes to the trail. Okay, um, oh, and by the way, huh, speaking of our trail manager, Linda Moran, she's, uh, got several, um, waste containers. Uh, one of the homeowner associations got new cans, and so they've been, somebody's been dumping them on the trail property, couple of every week. So she's picked them up, and I told her, we'll take them, and if somebody, if you know someone that needs an extra can in the village, we can give them, uh, we'll be, we'll probably have to paint out, uh, owner or whatever name, but, yeah, so if you, if somebody needs an extra one, I think I've got one or two at the DPW, FYI. Okay, um, Village Park, I don't think we've got too much going on. And the development, uh, community development block grant, nothing's changed since last month's report. And I have nothing further.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
A, a, P? We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
No.
Opposed, please say no. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, council and residents. Thank you.